Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting for Monday, March 13th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Present by phone.
Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Those will be available next week. Are there any additions to the agenda? Grace?
Thanks. I would like to move to add a discussion at the end of the meeting after mayoral appointments on a draft letter in support of constitutional rights in the Champagne County Jail.
Seconded.
All right, that item will take place after item K on the agenda. And that was moved by Grace, seconded by Chris. Next item is presentations and public input. We have two presentations tonight. The first is the Downtown Urbana Public Realm Study. And introducing this will be Stephanie McMahon.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here bringing you the results of the Public Realm Study. In early 2022, city staff issued a request for proposal for a downtown public realm study, the purpose of which was to develop realistic, actionable measures to make public spaces in downtown Urbana more vibrant and active. Coming out of the pandemic, staff felt it was a priority to seek options to encourage residents and visitors to spend more time in historic downtown Urbana to support businesses with a goal of promoting economic development. After reviewing several submissions, we selected the proposal from Confluence. Confluence is a Midwestern-based firm that combines the skills of landscape architecture, planning, and urban design to, quote, "create places full of life." As it says on their website, "Confluence believes in the transformative power of creative collaboration with a genuine approach, bringing together people, ideas, and our creative process to shape the future of our communities." The Confluence proposal also appealed to city staff because of their partnership with Project for Public Spaces, a firm that assists communities in creating community-powered public spaces. A team of five from Confluence and Project for Public Spaces began work in July to become familiar with the city and to gather community input through a variety of methods, including focus groups, which were attended by approximately 67 attendees and organized into various interest areas, including the downtown businesses, property owners, city departments and board and commission members, counties and districts. And then the final focus group was on music, arts, and events and active players and creatives in the downtown. We also created an advisory committee that had 20 stakeholders, including two council members, who met four times throughout the study. We did a merchant survey, to which 19 downtown merchants responded. There was a social pinpoint website, which was viewed by over 1,000 people, 90 of whom took place in, took active online survey and left 394 comments. Finally, we had two public meetings. Those meetings, along with the website, were advertised throughout the whole community via flyers, temporary signs, emails, social media. There were also stories published about this study and smiled politely and shown on WCIA. Finally, Confluence reviewed all of the past city plans that we had, we shared with them, and included that as part of their data gathering. Much was learned from the collection of input, including support and criticism about existing infrastructure, services, and programs, suggestions of things that might be changed, and new ideas for spaces and events. Overwhelmingly, there is much interest and love for downtown Urbana, along with the desire to see it prosper. Tonight, we'll present a brief overview of the study results, along with possible implementation options. Some of the ideas are easily doable, and others will take much more time, money, and collaboration with private landowners, most of who have been apprised of the study results involving their respective properties. After the presentation, we'll hand out email copies for the council, for you to study at your leisure, and then ask that you send any comments to us, and we'll take that and come up with an implementation plan that we will include in the 2024 budget proposal for your review. So I'd like to introduce Terry Burke Bigler. Sorry, I always say your name wrong. He's going to share the results of the study with you tonight.
Thank you. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Terry Burke Bigler. She was close with Confluence. We were the, as she mentioned, Stephanie mentioned, the lead consultant on the project. And then we also were partnering with Project for Public Spaces. I'm going to spend some time tonight just walking through the recommendations of the study, short-term strategies and implementation. Won't go through all of the process that we went through engaging the community and the data collection, just to be sensitive to everyone's time here. Out of that input process, our learning effort, we spent time walking around, getting to understand the physical environment, as well as meeting with the stakeholders, focus group members, and the public to learn more about the downtown realm and the downtown kind of heart of Urbana. From that came six big ideas that we studied further and that drive some of the ideas that are being presented in the study. One of those is connecting Market to Main Street. That was something that we learned in our review of early studies, prior to us even landing here. But then we heard over and over is, how do we connect those people that come to the market every Saturday to the downtown core? Felt like there were a lot of people that come to town, come into downtown, attend the market, have a great time there, but we're not seeing that residual traffic make it up to the shops and restaurants along Main and in the core area. So that was a priority. So without going through all the why, what, and how, the things I've highlighted there, so what we really look like, look at is creating a strong pedestrian connection from that market area to the downtown core, to really strengthen that as a place that people would feel comfortable, one, that they know they can make that walk, they have something that sort of, as we've used during our process here, that notion of breadcrumbs, that they've got little breadcrumbs along the way to get them from the market to the core area of downtown. Item number, or idea number two, music and event spaces. So understanding that that is really something we heard could be a key sort of differentiator for downtown Urbana, something to build on that's unique as an entertainment option for families during the day, but also evening entertainment. And so looking for places to introduce flexible spaces, so as we looked at how the public realm could be rethought about in terms of creating spaces for those events to happen, thinking about them to be flexible so that they can serve multi-uses, being utilized for music events, as well as other special events and annual events that could occur in the downtown area. Big idea number three, really outside the scope of the public realm study, but the introduction of more diversity in housing was something we heard multiple times in our meetings with the community. And while it may be outside the scope, it definitely impacts the public realm. So it was something we needed to at least think about as a part of the process. While we're not doing a housing study, we're not developing any key recommendations about what type of housing, how much housing, anything like that. We do talk about locations that we think might be appropriate to consider for products similar to the 200 South Vine or things like that that could bring more, more people into The next one is civic gathering space, and that really goes hand-in-hand even with the kind of the music venue or outdoor event space. But really looking for a place for people to gather downtown. That could be the market, could be where the market is today. It's a parking lot, but a lot of people come there. But we do have examples of where those places have become real, real kind of gathering points and a place that attract people. So we'll talk about how we could potentially rethink that location as well. But even looking at the introduction of more centralized green space in the core of downtown and how we could achieve that. Pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, building upon what's already coming into and through downtown, but really creating that, that strong network so that it is really comfortable and it's a pleasant experience for people that are bicycling, whether they're commuters or recreational bicyclists, families, individuals, things like that. So really leveraging the corridors and to connect downtown to the neighborhoods, as well as to campus and farther beyond that. And then the final big idea there is really carrying forward the wayfinding plan that was, that was already in place or discussed prior to this effort. But really, identity and wayfinding is a key part of helping to activate the downtown. When we, when we talk about that, we think about from the very perimeter and how do you even find out where downtown is, all the way into the downtown core. Now, what this plan doesn't do is it doesn't talk about wayfinding signage in terms of arrows that are pointing you to parking or to certain downtown destinations. We really think more about the identity pieces. Some of that other wayfinding is already addressed elsewhere. So really, really trying to make, create a unique and authentic identity, or take the identity that's here and create it in a way that's visible for people. So for instance, coming in from the north, you understand where downtown is, and then whenever you arrive, you've got a strong sense of place when you, when you land here. So looking at some of the recommendations in the, in the study, we'll talk about the framework plan of the study that talks about different focus areas, the downtown core, the Lincoln, South Lincoln Square area, and the triangle. Those are three areas where we focus on some suggestions for modifying layout, maybe introducing different types of land use or green space. And this map, it's got a lot on it. The one on the left, though, really is our framework, framework map, a framework plan for the study. It addresses a lot of what will be talked about in the subsequent sections of the plan, but I want to focus on a few things and categories here. So when you see these sort of light blue star-looking shapes, that's, that's identifying places for gateways, identity elements that could begin to signify the edge or the perimeter entry points to downtown. And then you've got the kind of reddish, maroon-shaped boxes. Those are those focus areas that I'll talk about. It's the triangle area, focus area C at the northwest, so the triangle being at Main and Springfield up in that area. The downtown core area, I'll refer to that quite a bit around Elm, Main, Broadway, around the parking structure, and then the South Lincoln Square. So that area is south of the mall and where the market is. Those are the, just to kind of get your bearings about what I'm going to be talking about. And then you'll see these, these icons, the kind of the pink and the purple and the orange and the green. When you see those throughout tonight, the presentation, but also when you review the document, the, what those are doing is helping you understand how these ideas or these proposals tie back to the big ideas. So for instance, if we're proposing a potential green space, that's where that green circle might land, or potential space for introducing music or leveraging where there's music and entertainment already happening. And then, you know, where might there be a place for additional housing? That's what those, those little circular icons are for. The other map on the right, then, begins to show how we're connecting. That was one of that, that kind of key things, how do you connect the market to downtown and vice versa? So really looking at the market, the downtown sort of connector piece, which we'll talk about, is around the IMC and just north of Lincoln Square Mall, and then connecting into the downtown core at Main and Broadway, and then ultimately up to Boneyard Creek. And then how we can create through a, really a connected set of spaces that you already have in place, activating the alleyways that are already there, looking at them in a different way, activating street corridors. But that's what we're talking about, is really taking what you already have and trying to activate it so that it is a more pedestrian-centric environment. So the concept, starting with focus area A, and I would, I would lead with, the, the study really looks at long-term, more visionary proposals. And then we also talk about some more short-term strategies. And so the term that Project for Public Spaces utilizes is this term of lighter, quicker, cheaper, as this notion that while there are big ideas that can take years to develop, if they develop at all, but can be real game changers, there are also these shorter-term opportunities to demonstrate ideas and test ideas. So I'll talk about the two, the two differences, but I'm going to start with those longer-term visionary-type projects. And virtually all of these are going to involve a public-private partnership of some sort. Whether they're on public property or not, they're adjacent to, they're going to take a relationship with the adjacent property owners that may want to utilize those spaces and activate those spaces, but also, you know, may play a role in maintaining some of those spaces. If you look at the alleyways, Fish Alley, Crane Alley, the areas like that. But then also the, the public investment, public right-of-way, taking, the city taking a lead role in making these things happen. Real quick, this concept looks at really just pedestrianizing and enhancing the spaces that are there today around the parking structure. So doing some additional improvements to Fish Alley, to Crane Alley, whether that be enhancing the lighting, maybe adding more mural artwork and things like that, and then really thinking about that space between the garage and back behind the iron post in that area. Already somewhat active, and it's a space that uses backdoor patio seating, but we'll talk in this, in this study about what else could be done to clean it up and make it even more attractive for use. Another thing that's proposed, a bigger idea here, that again, thinking of a public-private partnership, is maybe the, the parking lot along Race Street in front of the, the hotel, maybe that's a better place for infill development than it is for a parking lot in the future. Again, a little bit outside the scope of our study, but it does influence the public realm. And so how would that happen? Well, if a deal could be struck with the, the city to help the hotel with parking, maybe there's valet parking provided in the garage in exchange for some sort of deal to maybe make that parking lot something that could be more of a development-type site, still allow access and use by the, by the hotel in a way that they need. But those are the types of things that we'll talk about, and, and a lot of this, they're ideas. You know, they, they ultimately take the market to drive them, or, you know, they take other players to just sort of latch on to an idea and carry it forward. The other things that are proposed that I'll talk about as we move forward are some improvements around the Independent Media Center that begin to connect Broadway back to the market. But at Broadway, we're, we're talking about a pedestrianized street. So basically what that would be is rebuilding the street in a way that still functions for cars, still functions for buses, but maybe we remove the curbs and make it more of a plaza space so that when you want to have a special event, it could potentially be a location for that. So it becomes a regularly-used gathering space. You do temporary reroute of the bus during those events. You close it off through Bollards or however you want to do that, but that could become that sort of festival space that doesn't happen on Main Street. We heard there was some concern about in the past, business owners, you know, weren't necessarily always in favor of Main being the place that was blocked off for events, so maybe there's a different way where we can have an event there that could be that, that breadcrumb that I mentioned, that brings people from the market up to downtown for something after the market. So we're looking for places where we can create gathering, and that's, that's sort of a, a space that does that without really changing the infrastructure of the, of the building and of the downtown square, so to speak. So just a series of precedent images of what those spaces could look like, whether you're activating the alleyways, creating, you know, more kind of ambient lighting and really enhancing the experience of those spaces, activating the, the Broadway street section so that it's, it's more than just a street for cars and buses, but could be a people space. So that's, you'll see, you'll see these types of precedent images throughout the document as well, just to help kind of provide some visual sense of what that space could become. So concept two, in that same area, looks at what we've called a hybrid approach. So, you know, we looked at, well, what if a portion of that parking garage were removed? The sort of western, southwestern leg, if you will, go back. So maybe this segment of the garage could be removed. You still keep the ramp in place to access the upper level, but what that does is it begins to create this central pedestrian plaza space. And maybe that's a place where you can introduce some shade structures, you can have a flexible, you know, flexible space for events, just becomes that sort of centralized gathering space as opposed to maybe doing that over on Broadway. So this then becomes that heart that connects from, from Main Street through the alleyway and from Race through the alleyway into this pedestrian zone. So it really gives those properties the dual frontage aspect. And then it also brings another active space close to that link down by Independent Media Center down to the market. And this one, not, not suggesting that the, the parking lot by the hotel would need to change. Really, a lot of these have kind of interchangeable parts. If that idea had merit, it could float with either of these concepts. It's just a matter of working out the, the parking deal. But in this case, we thought, okay, if we're going to remove a portion of the parking, then let's not go down that road of trying to relocate the hotel parking into the garage. So some imagery of what that could look like. Again, this image A looks from the south, looking into that space, parking garage, that would be left there on the right-hand side of that image. So just creating some sort of shade structures, some views of what that could look like at night and during the day, just to give you a sense of, of the activation that could occur in that space. You could have small music events go on in there, could be other types of, maybe there's an art fair or something like that that happens that's, that's, you know, things that don't compete with the market but can complement them. And then the third concept in that focus area A is, okay, so let's think big, and what if that whole, you know, the parking garage moved? And the parking that's in that is redistributed to the surface lots around downtown. And then that space becomes a, a public gathering area that's really on that important corner at Broadway and Main. So really pulling a pedestrian gathering space in a central green up to Main Street to activate that. And then the back end of that, the, the south half of that will be, become an infill development opportunity. So building some sort of new rentable space could be retail first floor, maybe some upper level office or housing, but fronting that plaza space with some sort of commercial space. So there could be, you know, cafes, shops, things like that that begin to activate that, that lower level. And then maybe that, instead of trying to activate a plaza space in the center, that whole edge along Elm just becomes redevelopment infill site, and we prioritize the northeast corner for some sort of central green space. So what could that look like? So you could see a view here if you were, image A, if you were floating up above Broadway and Main, looking back into that space. Maybe there's a stage built up against the existing building that remains there with some sort of mural to really kind of identify that, give it a, a unique sense of identity there. And then again, just another view of along Main Street, just to identify that as, as a central green space, or along Broadway, I mean. And then we move down to the South Lincoln Square area, focus area B. And in this area, you know, we're proposing that the market stays, but let's invest in rebuilding this parking lot so that it works as a market and not just a parking lot that you set the market up in on the weekends. So what does that look like? Well, we'll talk about how, you know, maybe these, these landscaped islands, we eliminate curbs. One thing we know about markets and festivals is when people are shopping or out, you know, having a good time, having street food and things like that, they're not always watching where they walk. So if we can eliminate curbs and redesign this as more of a pedestrian plaza space with paved islands that are mountable and walkable, but those still function as parking during the day, and those are still set up with tents the way they would be today, that that would be an improvement, as well as introducing a, a permanent market structure that links the two parking lot areas together, but also gives a real sense of identity to the market and says, this is our market, this is where we, where it resides, understanding that not all the vendors fit there. But that could be a space that really gives identity to the market, but it also can become a four-season space. So that could be some rentable area that the city could, could utilize as well. And then that, we think, also helps to improve the connection over to City Hall. We'll talk about, you know, the one concern we have with the City Hall front now is it doesn't really feel like the front just because of where parking is and things like that. So is there a way to really reinforce that connection to City Hall and then over to the mall to really create this pedestrian frontage in front of the co-op, as well as just linking more pedestrian traffic through this space up into the mall to support those businesses? And then we look at, well, if there was a location for new housing, perhaps south in these large parking lots that the city owns, south of the mall could be a place to introduce new housing. Don't have any sense if this is the right amount, scale, but really just taking from, again, that, that model at 200 South Vine in terms of a product like that, three-story seems to be a, a good type of density for, for the area. But we think that could be a way to, to, you know, really make those parking lots kind of of a higher and better use than they are today just for parking and further activate, bring more rooftops, bring more people into the downtown core to further support all the businesses. And then finally, on this page or on this slide, the other thing we talked about, I mentioned the Independent Media Center, existing parking lot just to the east of that, and then the, the U-shaped, horseshoe-shaped drop-off area at the terminus of Broadway there. So what we're talking about here is maybe improving that pedestrian corridor, the sidewalk area just between, or just to the east of the mall, and maybe taking some of what's already happening there with the student artwork and things that are done out there during camp, and really creating that sort of fun space, but it, it really links the market and the parking lot to maybe more of a green space, or maybe it's just, you know, doesn't have to be overdeveloped, but just a flexible space that could be an asset for the IMC as well. But it, it improves that pedestrian experience rather than walking from parking lot through the, through the narrow walkway to another parking lot and then along the street. So trying to create more of these sort of green linkages that connect people up to the downtown core area. So what would that look like? So you could see, you know, if the market's set up, you can see it on Market Day with the tents. You know, maybe there's an opportunity for some cool sculptural thing to occur at the corner of Illinois and Vine that really identifies the market. If there is a shed, you know, this could be a view of what that could look like coming in from the east, from, from Vine and over by the City Hall. But also, you know, that, you could picture that being a place where people are shopping on Market Day, but maybe there are garage doors that drop down and that becomes a rentable area for special events. And again, you can kind of see the, the curbless walkways that could be constructed in that parking lot as well. And then this, this idea is the concept that, it's been talked about before, it came up in a few of our meetings, so we went ahead and put it on paper and said, let's see what that could be. And it really looks at sometime in the future if the mall was re-envisioned as less of an interior mall and more of an exterior street mall, where we keep basically the southern half of the mall, those, those blocks that have kind of a crosshatching pattern on them. The idea there is those are the existing mall structures, stay in place. But what we're trying to do is maybe, you know, if you can envision removing the roof off of the hallways, off of the corridors. The width of those spaces are comparable to a city street right-of-way from building, building face to building face. So maybe you reskin those interior store facades so that they become exterior and work as more of a pedestrian eye, or pedestrian street. And then east-west, we connect through there with a pedestrian corridor. And then the northeast corner, just based on the configuration of that building, maybe that one is the, the one segment that gets rebuilt and redeveloped into a different building. Not sure if it would function well in this scheme if it was left as it is today, but that's something, obviously, if this has legs, it would have to be studied. This is still a draft. One of the things we've, we've learned recently is that, so the entire mall's on a, there's a basement. So doesn't mean you can't do this, just means that maybe we're not putting a full street through there, maybe we're doing something that's more pedestrian-oriented. So we need to account, that's all those things that would have to be accounted for in this concept. But in reality, the big idea of the market, connecting the market, that still stays intact. The only thing that would change here is if this vision actually took hold, you know, what could be reimagined at the southeast corner of the hotel as maybe more of an outdoor plaza space, but then reconnecting the, the street grid into downtown from the neighborhoods to the south? And then what could that look like? So again, kind of thinking if this is the southeast corner of the hotel. So again, kind of thinking if this is the southeast corner of the hotel, looking at that space with Broadway on the right, and then Elm just here in the foreground, just again reconnecting, or I'm sorry, Elm would be in the foreground, in the background up there. And then this would be that new pedestrian corridor, east-west and extension of Green Street through where the mall is today. And this is what that could look like down on the ground if you're looking east along what would be extension of Green Street. And then the third area, Boneyard Creek, so the triangle we call it. So really, this takes the Boneyard Creek master plan and just kind of furthers that idea of opening this space up to pedestrian access to the creek. And then looking at that city-owned parking lot as a pedestrian accessway. And then, you know, this area to the north was considered for redevelopment as part of the Boneyard Creek Plan. So really, just thinking about what that could be and furthering those ideas for improving and changing this whole edge of the creek. And then also looking at improving the triangular, the triangle here and the vehicular circulation, and maybe rerouting, reconfiguring Main so that it connected straight into Cedar, and then eliminate that kind of three-way stop or three-way intersection here, and convert that back into some, basically some found pedestrian area. So what would that look like? So you could imagine Boneyard Creek, kind of that area being cleaned up, parking lot removed. One of the things we think, even though the Boneyard Creek improvements that have been made to date up on Race are attractive, they're just not that visible from the pedestrian, from the street. So if there's a way that we can lay the slope back and make this more approachable and make it easier for people to get in and utilize that space, we think that would be a benefit. And then actually probably even activate that space even more up at Race, because now people have a, I guess, a more welcoming way to get into that pathway system. And then what could it, you know, what could you do with this space? Again, if you were to disconnect Main and this, from Springfield and this line, this triangular line through here, and have this found pedestrian space, you can imagine that being, again, maybe a new flexible pedestrian zone. So I'm going to move into the lighter, quicker, cheaper here quickly. But the last thing that we did is we looked at how you might modify streets. One of the things that came up was activating sidewalks. So we've got to figure out, where do you find space to activate those sidewalks? Well, I think this photo is a good example of how some of the sidewalks are very narrow today, so if we're thinking about, how could you do cafe seating, things like that? Well, there's room in the street to maybe reallocate space. So if we can allocate more space for sidewalks and still accommodate what we need to from a traffic, parking, and bicycle standpoint, we tried to find that. And so we've gone through a series of studies of some of the streets, and that's included in the study as well, to look at maybe reallocating space like that. The identity and wayfinding component, we looked at some key areas that I'll talk about at Area A. You can see where that's at, it's just north on Vine, so coming into downtown. Doesn't have to be a gateway, but we think there's a real opportunity there to do something, something important that announces that you're arriving into downtown. Take advantage of the portal that the railroad bridge already creates. The other one at Race and Broadway, so take advantage of that crossing over Boneyard Creek that we were just talking about to do something more visible up at Street. And then we think it's also important at Green, that entrance from campus through the neighborhood, we should look at that as a key gateway moment. And then I mentioned the corner of the market area as well is a monumental opportunity. The lighter, quicker, cheaper opportunities, so essentially consider those as temporary, things that you could do quickly and for a more affordable price point and test. So there's a lot of ideas in here for where parking areas or potentially streets could be closed off, and you turn that gray area into green area that could be utilized for fun community gathering events. And the idea behind these is to really test some of these ideas about gathering people together. Where do people congregate? You know, if we build something, will they use it? Well, we don't have to build it first, we can test it with some cheaper opportunities. So there's a number of spaces that we've identified that could work for temporary installation. There are six different locations, there could be more, but six that we've identified and studied. One at Buiecy Bank and their parking lot, you know, understanding they're a good community partner and they hold some special events in that parking lot sometimes, maybe there's a location there where you could bring in some things for a weekend, or a week at a time, or something like that. Another location might be that parking lot in front of the hotel at the corner of Race and Elm. Maybe that's another area. We're trying to find areas that are near downtown. So if those can be a place that start to attract people downtown, then that's a good indication of the types of things that people would look for and would do while they're in downtown and where they would congregate. So there's a number of these, the County Plaza Parking Lot, you know, potentially on top of that parking deck when they're moved in and construction's complete. Maybe looking at the other portion of that parking lot by Rose Bowl to complement the music that they're doing already in that space outdoor. And then looking at the area off Main Street. So maybe there's a way to take that triangular space and set it up temporarily just to test it. What kind of reaction is there to the traffic, change in traffic pattern there? And do people use it if we create a space? The key here is do it in a way that you can monitor and maintain, pay attention to it, have someone dedicated to it, so that you're actually getting good data from it. And that's something that's talked about in the implementation as well. So the last part of this, the implementation portion of the document really begins to spell out the how. So we'll talk in here about the importance of leadership. How is the study being utilized? Who's the, you know, who are the champions, whether it's in City Hall or in the community? Funding, where can funding come from for the various different ideas that are proposed? Partnerships, we can't say that enough, partnership, 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 whether it's the shorter lighter, quicker, cheaper, or the long-term improvements? And then phasing. This is not something we realize that can be done all at once. Some of these ideas may never come to fruition, but this is, this study is an opportunity to think big and dream. And the way this is built is in parts. So throughout the implementation, we take the concepts and we break them up into individual project components that your staff can look at and say, hey, this is something we think you could move forward with, and begin to look at how you would put funding to those individual pieces and parts. So you're not locked into saying, well, we can only do all of it, or we can do none of it. That's not the approach at all. And so we've done that for all of these focus areas, as well as the wayfinding, and begun to put some price, some idea of budgetary numbers on those. Not that they're designed, but just to give you an idea of magnitude based on the location of what you may want to be prepared to invest in those locations. And then the other part of this that's helpful is for the lighter, quicker, cheaper. So we spent some time helping you begin to think about where those make the most sense. We actually had a work session with the task force to help begin to prioritize what made the most sense for locations for these lighter, quicker, cheaper installations. So we've gone through this and based on, you know, some of our thoughts, begun to prioritize, or at least grade them, on which ones seem to make the most sense that then you and your staff can look at and say, okay, this one makes the most sense to move forward with now or later. And then finally, there's a catalog, a shopping list, if you will. For all these things that are talked about in the lighter, quicker, cheaper ideas, there's a list of the types of things that you could utilize and roughly how much those might cost to purchase. And then the project for public spaces also is assembled over the years, basically an online catalog, so staff has access to that to begin shopping for where they could find some of these. And at the end of the day, it really is a matter of how you want to do this. It could be as much sweat equity as you want to put into it versus going out and buying some of these features. So that was a lot, I know, but I tried to get through it as quick as I could.
Thank you. We have a few minutes for questions. This is a lot to digest. It's the first time all of us have seen the final report, so thank you very much for that. And obviously, this is the first of many discussions. So a couple of questions. Chris?
Yes, Stephanie, maybe you could tell us, I mean, Terry, are you done now? I mean, this is the report, this is the study, and...
We are not done-done. The word draft is on there intentionally. We are close to finish, but we still, so input from you all and then any other comments that you share with Stephanie and her team. We want to begin, we want to work those in as best we can. But in terms of anything that we know of to date, it's incorporated. We're fussy about graphics, so we're still playing with some of that stuff, but the meat is pretty much there, yeah.
So Stephanie, where does this report go and kind of where does it fit in our future planning and all that?
Yeah, we're working on putting together some things, maybe we could even implement this summer with some of the quicker, lighter, cheaper. So our team would be putting together some basic implementation ideas that we would put into the budget, and of course be looking at what's too eligible since most of it would be in the downtown. And then see if we couldn't, we might just be trying one lot, some activities in one or two lots this summer. And then working with the economic development team and you all, if there are some of the bigger ideas that you like and want us to explore further, that would need additional study and, you know, work up and more discussions with the private property owners. Chandra?
Hi, thank you, Terry, for your presentation. And I don't really have a question, it's more so of a comment, but these are great ideas and hopefully it sparks more ideas in the downtown area. We want our community to grow and stay attractive to current residents and potential future residents. So I appreciate the commissioning of this type of study. And again, just want to say that these are just ideas and things to think about, and so nothing's in stone and that the final say lies with us and the residents. And so I look forward to diving in more, and I really appreciate being brought in at the beginning of this study and being able to see it from the beginning to now. So thank you.
James?
Yeah, I want to echo those words from Chandra, because these are ideas, and what I like about, thank you for your presentation, what I like about it is it's around concepts, and it goes to specifics. But if some of those specifics don't resonate with people or the public, then we need to hear other methodologies, other specifics, that we could go to, to address that. But I do have a question. One of the things that's challenging me, challenging me a little bit about some of the images here are the things that are labeled infill development that on the picture look like they're, you know, thin as a rail. So I'm not having a, I'm not having, I'm not seeing what those are. You talked about housing and those little horseshoes down below Lincoln Square and the, and I don't, I don't see that space as being large enough to do housing like you're describing, or the thing along Race Street in the parking lot that's part of the hotel parking lot. I don't see how that becomes building structure that enhances the downtown or fits with the rest of downtown. So I may need some help in understanding what those infill suggestions could be that would fit.
So I know you're short on time, so what I can do is we can provide some additional information to Stephanie to get to you, but I would say essentially they are all proportionally appropriate. And what I mean by that is the footprint that you see is, so if you were to look at what's shown south of Lincoln Square, and you compare that to basically the aerial map of, say, what you see at 200 South Vine, similar shape and size. So that's kind of what we're thinking about now. How tall and all of that yet to be determined, but the footprints themselves are based on, you know, similar blocks that you would see downtown. So for instance, where we're showing that infill along Elm in one concept, little bit bigger box, would be similar to the kind of depth of footprint that you would see along Elm. So that's, that's kind of what that's based on, but I can get Stephanie some additional thoughts. And again, that's where I wanted to lead with, we have to be careful in a study like this, because we're not really doing development, land use planning, or a housing study. But it impacts what the public realm does significantly, so we need to at least think about it. So these shapes, they have a long way to go before, if they were even become reality, before they would become reality. So we're just trying to use some comparable things around there to just say, this is about how big that could be. But no, it's, there's a reason you have that question, it's not fleshed out yet.
Grace?
Thanks again for the presentation and all this information in here. I have some questions I'll send in later, but just wanted to throw out initial idea of, I'd also like to see us focusing on some of the spaces we do have and utilizing that, and keeping in mind the weather conditions. You know, to me, it doesn't make sense talking about cutting through Lincoln Square Mall so we can have outdoor walking space, when half the year you'd want to walk inside through the mall anyway. I think outdoor green spaces are absolutely great, but a lot of the time, that's not a relevant option here. So I'm also curious how we can utilize some of the indoor and outdoor spaces we already have, like the mall corridors and the Boneyard area. So yeah, I'm curious in utilizing those as well.
Okay, Sharice, and then we'll wrap it up.
Sorry, I'm just, I just want to piggyback on something that Grace just said regarding the mall also, because I have my junior prom in Lincoln Square. So there's plenty of spaces there when we're talking about gathering spaces, and we just did Read Across America there. And I think that...
In the mall?
In the mall. And I really think that, that those, that, and of course, you know, the city doesn't own Lincoln Square, so we don't have any real say, so we'd have to, that would be something that we, you know, that one would have to discuss, of course, with the owner. But there's, there are plenty of, there's plenty of open space there where there could be a concert here and there inside. There could be other, it could be an event area because of the inside and how it's, how open it is. So that comes to mind when you talk about how that, how that place could be, how that area or that space could be useful and more useful to the community. It is, I think that that may be something you might want to consider.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, this is the first of many conversations. This is a study, not a plan, but you have to start with ideas and visions, and envisioning things, and this is a good place to start.
Thank you.
Okay, the second presentation is addressing food insecurity. And Councilmember Wilken will introduce this.
Thank you. Yeah, if our presenters can come forward and get hooked up. And so this is from the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign Environmental Leadership Program, led by Dr. Eric Green. This class presented last year was some of their research on a previous cohort about the bag tax and food compost, I believe. And this cohort's topic was addressing food insecurity. I think that's all I have for introduction. Thank you for being here, if you don't mind stating your name, and you have 10 minutes.
Make sure, can you turn on your microphone, please?
And then speak into it. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Stefan Ilyev.
And I'm Claire Sullivan.
And we are residents of Urbana and students representing the Environmental Leadership Program here at the University of Illinois. We came today to express our concerns about food insecurity in Urbana, Illinois.
Many residents in this county have to make tough decisions, such as affording groceries or to pay their bills.
Could you speak a little closer into the mic, make sure it's on?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Thirty-five percent of food insecure residents of Champaign County do not qualify for federal nutrition assistance. For citizens that do qualify for federal assistance, the SNAP program has cut its funding without notice to pre-pandemic levels. This change was made despite the unemployment rate increasing 3.5% in one year. The SNAP program provides necessary temporary assistance to low-income persons in Illinois, but is insufficient at lowering the food insecurity rate in Urbana. COVID-19 has exacerbated the condition of food insecurity with the closure of many businesses, higher unemployment rate, and emotional strife. Champaign County has a 15% food insecurity rate, well above the 10.2% national average. Food insecurity is the direct result of low income and low access conditions that are prevalent within this county. Champaign County can be defined as a food desert, an area where residents have few to no convenient methods of getting access to affordable and healthy foods, particularly fruits and vegetables. Food deserts occur disproportionately in low-income and non-white communities. Food deserts occur disproportionately in low-income and non-white communities.
Diet-related diseases are more common for people living in food deserts. That is because common sources of nutrition for those that are food insecure are dollar stores and fast food restaurants. Although cheaper, these options consist of processed meats and cheeses and a total lack of fresh produce, making them unhealthy. Consumption of these products as a main source of nutrition has been linked to higher rates of diet-related diseases, such as obesity, diabetes, heart disease, and high blood pressure. Current convenience stores are often located near grocery stores, outcompeting them due to their lower costs. Along with the issue of affordability comes access, or rather, lack of access. Through analysis of USDA census data from 2018, we found that a large portion of Urbana's residential areas are considered low-income and are more than half a mile from a supermarket. These areas contain at least 100 housing units in which residents do not have a personal vehicle. Current bus routes are inaccessible and unreliable for residents to reach grocery stores, leaving them to choose fast food and liquor stores for sustenance.
We would like to present a few recommendations to the council about how to go about addressing this issue. Affordability must be met with access. Low-income communities tend to rely more on public transport, making access and affordability interdependent. Grocery store locations in Champaign County are mainly accessible by car. For constituents that do not have a reliable mode of this type of transportation, going grocery shopping becomes very time-consuming. This is especially a problem for working-class people, disabled persons, and those who shop for more than themselves. Current bus routes need to be updated to be more accessible and reliable to and from the grocery store. Many routes along the hub, oh, sorry. Urbana uses a hub-and-spoke model, meaning some destinations are a walk from the hub. And this can be complicated by weather, traffic, and carrying items. Many routes along the hub lack shelters, leaving residents to wait for the bus alongside the road. In other instances, sidewalks are close to heavy traffic and should be updated with trees and green space between traffic and the sidewalk to protect pedestrians.
Public data regarding the status of food insecurity in Champaign County is only available from pre-pandemic. It is necessary that there is access to current data to assess where food insecurity is most prevalent and to quantify the impact of the pandemic on food insecurity rates. Increasing community engagement around the topic of food insecurity will facilitate positive interactions between local government and constituents. We recommend appointing a community liaison that can represent, survey, and advocate for food insecurity in Urbana. Constituents will be more likely to voice needs and concerns to trusted local officials if this person is a community member. As constituents of the city, we urge you to work closely with residents and stakeholders to adapt and tackle these issues. The health consequences that result from food insecurity are preventable through a better allocation of resources. With your new funding of $749,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act that has been directed to increasing availability and affordability of food, we know that this is possible. It is necessary that these changes are implemented because of their long-term impacts on the community.
We want to thank you for hearing us today. We've already sent out emails to the council members to introduce some of what we talked about previously. Please reach out with ideas and any questions that you might have. And we hope to hear from you soon. Thank you.
Will you share your slides with City Council?
Yes.
Can you do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions? I'd also encourage to share them with folks at the Mass Transit District because they are in charge of the bus system, the bus routes, and the shelters. So that would be good information for them to have. Chandra.
You mentioned that Champaign County is a food desert. The whole entire county or Urbana?
When we look at the map, we see that there's a few different sort of like categories. Not the community as a whole. We see that there's some of this space, not included in this map, but this is largely like residential area in the purple. And it's on your fact sheet as well.
Sharice.
I just want to thank you for your presentation. And I also want to say and add that the very thing that you're talking about is something that I came to City Council with many years ago, before I was even on City Council, about my area in particularly being a food desert. And I know that it is, it's not something that's going to happen. This is Hogwarts, we're not going to just wave by magic wand. And that's going to change. But the difficulty, I can say this much because I have talked to different staff members here in the building. And the big difficulty is actually getting a brick-and-mortar grocery store developer. That's, that's been my understanding from the very beginning. Developers tend to not want to develop in the lower-income areas, to just be honest about it. The convenience store, you were saying convenience stores have cheaper food. Not always. In my area where we have, we have two Circle K's. And trust me, they charge way more than any, any grocery store would charge for anything in there. That's the one thing. The other thing is also down the street and across into Champaign, there was a Family Dollar that's since closed. So we don't even have that convenient store that was there, that, that, that particular thing that's there. That's been closed, and I'm not sure how long. Because of gun violence, I stopped driving down Bradley. But it's been, it had been closed for quite some time. And so I get what you're saying. And I also know for a fact that this is an area too that we have been working on for at least four years to try to, to eliminate some of these food deserts, like you said. I do, I did like your idea though about the MTD and the bus stops and so on and so forth because I realize that that is an issue based on the fact that we have so many students in my ward and in my area. So keep at it. Good job.
Thank you very much. One more.
Sorry, we slipped one last in. Thank you again for the presentation. I think those are excellent points, looking at the geographic location of grocery stores and the bus routes is an excellent point. And yeah, I encourage you, if you're interested in following with this topic, as the mayor suggested, reaching out to MTD. And I also encourage you to look at the bigger picture too, because sometimes it's easy to come and say, well, the city should do this because it's the city of Urbana. But we're also a whole big system. And there are things like mobile markets. There are organizations that deliver fresh produce for free to people in need. So there's, it's not, you know, a whole systemic solution, but there are a lot of pieces to this picture besides the actual grocery stores that fit into the whole big picture here. So I really appreciate you bringing up those points. And if you're interested in learning more, this is a big topic. You could keep on for a long time. Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually kind of a version of faster, lighter, faster, quicker, cheaper, lighter. I mean, it's the mobile food markets and smaller, smaller mobile vehicles that can go to the neighborhood. And that's operating here in Champaign, Urbana, right now. So that's one way, that's one thing we can do to expand access. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public input. If you'd like to address the council, please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you have up to five minutes to speak.
Is this, do I need to turn this on?
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Yes.
My name is Carl Weber. I grew up in Urbana, practiced law in Urbana for 40 years, and retired, so anything I say is my own comment. It's not on behalf of any client. I appreciated Mr. Brookbighler's presentation, lots of very interesting things. And in fact, reminds me of 1961 when the city council unanimously passed a three-phase Lincoln Square. One phase you see there. The second phase expanded the mall system to Main Street. And the third phase closed Main and expanded to Water and made the Water Street the Main Street in downtown Urbana. So thoughts have been given to some of these connections for 60 years. My dad, Judge Charles Weber, was the chair of the Economic Development Committee of the Chamber of Commerce that put together Lincoln Square. And it was, I would, I would say, a monumental task. Over my practice, I did a number of things that involved the hotel, the federal courthouse, Lincoln Square, lots of things, the art, the art display, lots of things that affect downtown Urbana and Lincoln Square. I feel like I have an investment in all of that. One thing I might mention was that the, the deck was obtained primarily for overflow parking for Jumers, for the hotel, with an Urban Development Action Grant that Bruce Walden and Jeff Markland worked very hard on. And I think that's an integral part of maintaining the hotel's viability as well as the parking in front of it. My dad was involved with the hotel years ago, and it was scary to even put Lincoln Square there and, and reduce the parking that was adjacent to the hotel. I do have a number of comments about the concept of putting a mall, putting a drive, or even opening the mall areas in Lincoln Square. And I hope you'll take them as constructive comments. The first thing that occurs to me is that there are 40 tenants in Lincoln Square. It is, it is nearly full. And if there is a considerable amount of construction for a considerable amount of time, which seems to me would be required, we would lose almost all of those, if not all of them, to some other community, which I would rather not see happen. I think if, if looking into the actual cost of removing the roof and making the malls open, it will be significant. I know there are a lot of thoughtful people who have been in favor of this. But I think if you get down into it, it's going to be very difficult. As Mr. Brookbighler said, filling in the lower level of Lincoln Square would not only take up space that's being rented, but would be a huge project. Replacing the facades would be expensive. They are all interior facades and would have to be replaced with exterior walls. Replacing or reconstructing the HVAC systems, utilities, storage, stairways, elevators, roofs, drainage systems, restaurants, restrooms, plumbing, electrical, I can go on and on, is going to be hugely expensive. To say nothing of complicated access then to the, the lower level and the balcony, which houses the longest tenant of Lincoln Square. My dad, when he was very near the end of his life, still was laying there trying to figure out how to straighten out Race Street. I look at, I look at Lincoln, Lincoln Square, and I see that it jogs. And to straighten out that jog is going to require a tremendous amount of demolition and reconstruction, given the fact that a street has to have 90-degree, 90-degree curbs. I think that that proposal would limit access from one store to another and invite jaywalking. I think it would complicate access to Lincoln Square's parking lots. I think it would encourage double parking along that street that's, that's added, would require sidewalks, street amenities, et cetera, and would put pedestrians at risk. Is that my five minutes?
That's your five minutes.
I will send you the rest of my thoughts. They basically are around the issue of total expenses of demolition, the concept of what rent per square foot one would have to obtain from what's left to support the cost of doing the job.
We look forward to getting them.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And I apologize, I have a conflict and I'm going to have to sneak out.
Good evening. My name is Jim Webster, and I own the Lincoln Square Mall. Dress you this evening, not because of my elegance as a speaker, but because of the significance of the plan to counsel, which will have great effect on me, Lincoln Square tenants, downtown Urbana, and community residents. Plan is devastating. Process undertaken to develop the plan was harmful and damaging. It invited public input for plans regarding the demolition of Lincoln Square. And the plans, and then the option was later altered, but included such things as we're talking about this evening, demalling. And there was an article in News Gazette Saturday about the plans. So the very announcement of this puts that out there to the public. Why would people want to come to Lincoln Square and be a tenant when they know the city has plans to take them out potentially? The very thought of that is, has so many implications that I can't really explain them all. But just for example, any tenant of significance is typically looking for an option to renew. Those options are oftentimes based on the, on an initial rent of three to five years, let's say. And then they might seek three to five more additional option periods, subsequently resulting in 15, 20 years beyond the, beyond when the city's planner has identified a plan, have other plans. So why would anybody want to make that investment, take that risk, and move into a mall that has, at best, uncertainty? I've made considerable investments in Lincoln Square. I've spent 20 years of my life trying to make it a vibrant place for people. Obviously, I want to make some money at some point. But to this point, I have not. And I've reinvested 20 years of time, millions of dollars, many more millions than was ever invested in the hotel. The, I have not received financial assistance anywhere close to what the hotel has received. I have a vision for improving the mall constantly. Later this month, we're making, putting in a new elevator of $275,000. What's the, why would anybody want to put $275,000 into an elevator that's going to open onto a street thus be obsolete? We almost have to do it. But why would it, you know, it makes those investments much more questionable. We plan to do entire lighting of the mall, LED, we have plans for that. We're going to do it anyway regardless of how the, how the city, what, what position they take. So just kind of a little back, five years ago or so, when Health Alliance was here, I approached every city council member asking them if I could pay for an economic impact study to see what the effects would be on Health Alliance leaving. And they could pick the firm. And nobody took me up on it. Health Alliance has left for reasons most people know. And I spent the next few years trying to dig out. And that's about the time the public focus of what's in your square came about. I, I just was trying to backstop the mall as much as I could and then redevelop, which we have done, and millions more have been spent. We have not just, we're not just an economic place, but we host numerous events, most of which aren't revenue-generating venues. Just a few include Market in the Square for six months practically, Read Across America, as mentioned by your councilwoman, the News Gazette annual photography contest, train show, coin, currency show, Per Harbor Day, African Arts Festival, Conservancy of Central Illinois Play-a-Thon, and several others. We were invited, Hannah Smith and our mall manager and I were invited to meet with Stephanie McMahon and Darius White about one of the pop abilities. And we told them it was simply not, it was just not going to happen. It was preposterous. It physically won't do it, as Carl Weber alluded to originally. It would just be, might as well just tear down the mall. Anyway, I have more, a lot more to say, but obviously I'm constrained. And I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you very much.
Please, please send your comments in to council. Thank you.
Joe Webster.
Could you speak closer into the microphone?
Sure. Jim Webster is my father.
Jim Webster is my father, and for more than twenty years, I have seen him spend thousands of hours of his time, millions or tens of millions of dollars on the mall, not to mention seeing him lose countless nights of sleep over its well-being. It is frightening for me as a son to see the possibility of him losing his livelihood, and I also worry for the tenants that could also lose their businesses from this plan. However, I see so much support from the community today, and that is encouraging to me. At the last Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, it was mentioned that Lincoln Square is on the Dead Malls List, which is the Dead Malls of America. The Dead Malls List was last updated on the status of Lincoln Square in 2005. There have been so many changes to the mall since that time. I know of a shopping mall in Orleans Park that continues to be shown on the Dead Malls List, but it is now thriving. Today, Lincoln Square has recovered exceptionally well from the unfortunate loss of Health Alliance, and the above-grade space is now over ninety percent occupied. The lower level does have a higher level of vacancy, but our new mall manager has been successful in improving our occupancy. It is true that the mall may not appeal to many national tenants, but it has evolved into a center offering a wide array of businesses, and the events held throughout the year reflect its status as a community asset. Unfortunately, the plans discussed today may harm the mall's ability to continue to improve and could potentially even result in declining occupancy. As my father mentioned, tenants will be hesitant or outright refusing to sign long-term leases now. Many of these tenants spend tens of thousands of dollars of their own money, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they would be unwilling to do so with the uncertainty of the mall's future. A location is crucial to a retail tenant, so they cannot relocate as easily as so many business types. As a result, I anticipate that regardless of what happens, we will now have additional trouble in signing even short-term leases. Communication with the city has been surprisingly limited of late, if not outright non-existent. We did not know of the plan to discuss the demalling today until seeing a newspaper article on Saturday. Furthermore, we were never contacted by the consulting group. If we had, they would better understand the lack of feasibility, such as the basement. Further, tonight, they mentioned removal of the curbs, landscaping boxes, and while that is fine, they do serve a purpose. Shortly after the landscaping box was removed from the west parking lot, a vehicle ran into the mall. Also, please bear in mind that Health Alliance did not announce relocation from Urbana until shortly after the lawsuit was filed against them. In a day and age where developers expect significant incentives for municipalities for performing any types of improvements, my dad has asked for nothing. Some of those attending here today may not know that Lincoln Square does not actually own their parking lot, but rather it is leased from the city of Urbana. The city has refused to perform their maintenance obligations of late, and the condition of the lot has deteriorated. This is despite eleven years remaining on the lease. Furthermore, simply announcing this plan has resulted in a decline in value of this property, which was already damaged by the loss of Health Alliance. As a result, I ask that the city once again becomes an ally to the mall. Thank you.
I'm Joe Zalaback, the realtor, as well as president of the Preservation and Conservation Association, PACA, of Champaign County. First of all, I'd like to commend the council for focusing on a more vibrant and active downtown realm in Urbana. It's very much needed. I feel that the improvements that have been discussed will really help drive up the property values for our current and future residents. However, I'd like to talk a little bit more about Focus Area B, removing the roof and installing a street right through the middle of Lincoln Square Mall. We've already talked about the feasibility, or unfeasibility, infeasibility of that, structurally of that. But I would like to spend some time here to go over a letter I have here. May 8, 2006, a memorandum from the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, from Tracy Scully, the Survey Naturalizer Coordinator, to then Mayor Pressing, and Elizabeth Tyler from the Urbana Preservation Commission. Letter reads as follows. "The Urbana Lincoln Hotel slash Lincoln Square Mall, located three on South Broadway in Urbana, is nationally significant for listing in the National Register of Historic Places under Criterion A for Commerce and Criterion C for Planning. The Urbana Lincoln Hotel was designed by a prominent local architect, Joseph Royer, in 1923, while Lincoln Square Mall was designed as an addition to the hotel in 1964 by nationally renowned architect and planner Victor Gruen. The property also meets Criterion Consideration G, where listing property is less than fifty years old. Beginning significance starts in 1923 with the construction of the hotel. However, 1964 enclosed shopping mall addition is less than fifty years old, but possesses exceptional significance as the first enclosed mall in Downstate Illinois and an important and national example of an, of an urban shopping mall development aimed at downtown revitalization. Overall, the Urbana Lincoln Hotel slash Lincoln Square Mall has excellent integrity. The visual connection of the early hotel and the enclosed mall, which provide a new marketing concept and shopping experience, is still very apparent today. The associated parking is also an important and intact aspect to this property. The interior layout of both the hotel and the mall are remarkably intact. While other nearly enclosed malls have been significantly added onto or altered to reflect currently marketing trends with standardized brand architecture, this property has retained architectural design and associations. The Urbana Lincoln Hotel slash Lincoln Square Mall conveys both its historic and architectural significance and will make an important addition to National Register of Historic Places." So if we look at the past here, now, Lucas Farmall is unlike anything else anywhere, right? We've, it's managed the National Historic Register, and we should not aim to change that. I think some of the things that they've had been proposed to add spaces around the area makes sense, but to divide Linkin Farmall up and by putting a road through it is quite ridiculous. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Kyle Payne, and I'm a resident of Champaign, Illinois. I come here tonight to give critical feedback to the concept titled Mall Reimagined: A Focus Area B, the proposal essentially to build an outdoor corridor through the mall. I come here as the co-owner of Vona Moitai, located in Lincoln Square. I am a Lincoln Square tenant, one of only two Moitai gyms in central Illinois, and the only one that is co-owned by a member of the local Thai-in-law community. I can confidently say, in front of everyone here today, that while we are a thriving business as of today, we would not exist if Lincoln Square Mall was not an affordable option to us as it was at the time that we started. Lincoln Square, as it is today, is not really a mall in the traditional sense, right? It has blossomed into something akin to a vibrant community center, populated near completely with small businesses like my own. It's not uncommon for me to walk into the mall and see folk coming in to practice their dance moves, or to paint, or to play instruments. And it's also not uncommon for me to come into Lincoln Square during the weekends to see large gatherings taking place in the main corridor that is subject to that proposal. This is including Vietnamese New Year, which certainly could not be held in its current location in, during the requisite time if this proposal is made a reality. Vona Moitai is also currently planning to move to the downstairs level, or the lower level, currently also referred to in their presentation as the basement. If this plan is made a reality, then the hopeful future location of my business would be, likely become uninhabitable. And, you know, we hope to stay at Lincoln Square for a long time. It's been very, they've been very great to us, and we would like to pay that back with a long-term residency. I understand these proposals, and while on their face they may appear attractive, they make much less sense in our climate. The majority of the, our members of Vona Moitai are university students who would be much less likely to show up in the winter if that corridor was exposed to the elements, and certainly less likely to come if we are forced to move to another location because the downstairs level becomes uninhabitable. From the outside, from the outside, I understand the instinct to make large changes to Lincoln Square in the name of revitalization. I totally understand that. But I would like to, I would like to suggest a different path forward, one of preservation. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Grammich. I'm an architect. A number for you guys to chew on is that interior walls are designed for five pounds per square foot of lateral wind pressure, and exterior walls are typically defined between twenty-five and thirty. Also, so those interior walls in Lincoln Square are going to need to be completely removed and completely replaced. So that, plus the basement, plus many other things, just said, hey, take, I think it's shockingly infeasible to make that, to open that up and just use it as is. Single pane windows are going to be real cold in the winter. But I was actually mostly want to speak about parking. I know budget is tight in Urbana, and since, unless you guys have enough money to build another parking deck in the downtown core area, that's, that parking deck is the only urban-style parking option in the area. There's a couple large flat lots further out, but for going to the downtown core businesses, there's a tiny amount of street parking, that parking deck, and then illegally parking in some other business's private parking lot during when they're closed, and hope they don't notice and hope they don't tell you. Many of the really interesting ideas brought forward utilize the space that Urbana has access to, which is usually your street parking. So to implement many of the strategies shown, we have to reduce the street parking, and then other plans also reduce the parking deck. And they tend to counterbalance that by, well, private businesses will let you park places. That, that's hopeful and nice, but unless Urbana has the ability to introduce a new downtown parking deck, I would strongly caution against removing the one you have. I suspect it would be, I suspect it's a more, it's a very valuable resource, its parking space. While it's not everything, we don't need a million acres of mall-style parking lot everywhere. It is nice to have something central and able to be densely parked when there's a large group of people, especially if, as per these plans, we want to increase the number of people using that same downtown area. I think removing the parking deck and also the street parking would work together to create a very difficult-to-approach downtown core area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Derek Bries. I'm a resident of Urbana and Ward Four.
Could you, wait just a second till we reset the clock, please?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
All right. So yeah, Derek Bries, resident of Urbana, Ward Four. I didn't actually come to talk about the public study, but I would like to thank you for commissioning this study. I applaud you for trying to make downtown Urbana a little more pedestrian-friendly and revitalized. I think it's great. I'm not going to hyperfixate on putting a pedestrian walkway through the mall. That was one of many options. I think you got a lot of great options, and I think it's a really exciting plan, so I really look forward to seeing what you do with it. But I'm actually here to talk about, not surprisingly, the police contract. And I would like to address some of the comments and claims made by this group last week that were, at best, half true. First, there was some allegation that me or perhaps anyone else who is speaking on behalf of this contract is trying to speak on behalf of some sort of group that they are not a part of. I'm not speak on behalf of anyone but myself, and the facts, and the facts completely contradict that the black community of Urbana is not overpoliced. They're seventeen percent of the population, yet forty-two percent of arrests by UPD. The state is only fourteen percent, the county is fourteen percent, but 1988 through 2019, UPD, the total of the arrests, forty-two percent were black folks. Maybe I don't write the dictionary, I can't give you a definitive definition of overpolicing, but I'm pretty sure that constitutes overpolicing. So I would appreciate a minimization of any sort of attack on who I speak for, or just uninformed opinions, because the facts are just very contrary to that. Black folks are one hundred percent overpoliced in Urbana. I'd also like to address the idea that police discipline should be addressed through policy or ordinance. I don't know if that's a willful misunderstanding of the IPLRA, or if you're not familiar with it, but Section 15 does clearly and explicitly state that any collective bargaining agreement takes precedence over any ordinance, regulation, or rule relating to wages or conditions of employment. It's been the law of the land for quite a long time, so any plan to try to address police accountability and discipline through ordinance is misguided at best. I would also like to speak to the fact that there was some sort of false dichotomy presented, that you could either work on the public safety study, or you could work on the contract. I think you sell yourselves a little short. I think you can do two things at one time, pretty effectively. I think you can do a lot of things. I think we pay certainly Mayor Marlin and City Administrator Mitten sizable salaries to do the job of protecting the people of this city and making sure the city runs correctly, including oversight of your police force. In addition to that, you all wanted to say, oh, yes, we care about the civilian police review board, and we want to work on that separately, but again, as long as this contract restricts that body, it doesn't matter what you do outside of the contract. You have an opportunity now to remove those restrictions from this contract, but you didn't want to. You didn't even try. And I know you didn't want to because all of you, except for older persons Wilkin and Evans, specifically stated you knew exactly what you were doing, this process is exactly what you wanted, and you got exactly what you wanted out of it. You all directly said that. So please, everyone, if you're paying attention at all, know that your city council got exactly what they wanted out of this contract, that leaves police unaccountable, that restricts civilian oversight, and that gives out over, almost a million dollars in raises to cops that already make over twice the median household income. We just heard a presentation about food insecurity in this city. Poverty is much higher in Urbana than it is in the Illinois State average, and cops make over double the median income. They don't adequately represent the people they're supposed to serve and protect. They are serving their own interests by stealing our tax dollars and protecting themselves from civilian oversight and accountability.
My name is Julie Watkins, and I'm a resident of Urbana. And I also want to talk about FOP contract, but before that, I want to mention--
Julie, could you speak into the mic a little bit closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before I go into that, I would like that, I don't like the idea of taking the roof out of Lincoln, off of Lincoln Square. I'm running a kiosk there, and I see how that covered space is used for a lot of stuff, and I think that it's much better covered. Onto the police contract, I, I was having some of the things that the previous guy had spoken about. I'm not really sure how eighteen months of doing the, the public safety review slots into the fact that this contract is going to be for a full three years. And I, the comments last week of the people who said they were supported rather than people that were outvoted on what the process was, I'm not really sure what it is-- people that were outvoted on what the process was, I'm not really sure what it is you got out of the contract that you're supporting. I really don't like that side letter. To quote, you know, it's like, well, for one thing, it was instituted in September of 2011. I mean, and I, and it's still there. I mean, it's long, it's almost old enough to vote. And it's, one of the things that it says is that nevertheless, without waiving its positions asked to these issues, the city has agreed to provide the following written assurances. And then they go on to how the police aren't going to, what they, how they want to interact with the review board. And the impression that that gives, whether or not that was your intent, this is what seems to happen with the thing, is that the police said, well, we, we kind of want to veto that, we don't want to deal with that. And the city said, okay. And it's 16 and a half years later and it's still there. And I don't like the impression that it gives to the police to, I'm losing my sentence. I'm sorry. I don't like the, the attitude that that seems to be saying about what people think about, what the police think about civilians. And so I hope you will take that into consideration and at least explain to us what it is, is what changed and what is good about this contract if you're going to go through it. And I hope you will consider this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Apple and I'm here representing PACA, the Preservation and Conservation Association of Champaign County. Specifically, I'm representing the advocacy committee of PACA, which I chair and whose responsibilities include advocating for historic places in our area. I wish the city of Urbana great luck with making use of various intriguing ideas contained within the consultant's report. But while I think there are plenty of interesting concepts here, there are also issues of concern, clearly. It's clear that the consultants have worked hard to preserve and not significantly disrupt basic characteristics of Urbana's downtown. That's only fair given that the entire downtown is listed as a historic district on the National Register of Historic Places. However, I find much less sensitivity to the fact that Lincoln Square Mall is likewise a National Register site and perhaps the largest single structure National Register site nearby. The proposed concept two for focus area B, that is the Lincoln Square area, actually chops into pieces and partly demolishes Lincoln Square in order to reestablish Broadway and Green as functioning streets, or maybe not. This is very obviously not an acceptable treatment of a National Register site. Remarkably, it also says nothing of the fact that Lincoln Square is a privately owned property and acquisition and demolition costs of what's proposed would make it the very most expensive of all the proposals in the report tonight. With these concerns in mind, I strongly urge the council to set this proposal aside entirely as unviable and inappropriate. Thank you.
I'm Phyllis Williams, 810 West Main in Urbana. And I have kind of another take on this. The consultants kept saying about the 4,000 people that come to the, the market every Saturday and that really excites them and we want to shove them right into the restaurants and bars in downtown. But that, it doesn't compute. It doesn't work that way. I go to the market between seven and eight. Now, maybe I go at 10:00, but I'm not going to go drink a beer because I have a dozen ears of corn. That just doesn't make any sense. You've got to get your vegetables out of the heat. You got to take them home, then you come out for lunch later. But funneling 4,000 people into downtown, it doesn't make any sense. What would make sense is if the consultant had also addressed the civic center and everything just north of the plaza building. I'm also a PACA member. I salvage and I'm the other half of advocacy. And I can tell you that once the county plaza is finished, you're going to have more people. It's going to be like getting back Health Alliance, I do believe. And that kind of energy that's going to be generated for the businesses in Lincoln Square, for the businesses on Main Street, that's very important. And I think then you could make some decisions. You do need to set aside this thing about Lincoln Square though, right quick, right quick. And besides that, let's look at the repurposed Firestone Building. I thought that was rather intriguing. I get my car fixed there. So maybe you know something we don't. But if you're going to acquire property, why not go up the boneyard? Part of that's already vacant. So, thank you so much for your time.
City Council, can you hear me? My name is Sarah Nixon and I've come here again to speak about the resolution to approve the agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. But first, I'd like to offer brief comments on the two presentations that you heard this evening. As someone who is longtime farmer's market customer and who has worked year round at the Urbana Farmer's Market from 2019 to a couple of months ago, I know that the majority of market goers, market shoppers are focused on market goods. And so the trip to the market is planned and executed around food and to try and tease them out with breadcrumbs into an expedition toward the downtown zones or core, I don't think that would work in my view, based on my observation of their needs and habits. Market goers leave the market laden with fresh produce and frozen meats, foods that require immediate refrigeration and/or freezing. So they need to go straight home with their purchases, especially in the heat of summer. Two things market goers do need, however, that I've observed are access to family friendly bathrooms, access to family friendly pleasant spaces or places to sit, have a snack, people watch and enjoy the market musicians for a few minutes before they head straight home. It appears that the study researchers have not interviewed market goers nor vendors. Maybe they have, but it didn't seem that way. So hopefully, moving forward, they will, because there are lots of options that you could explore when it comes to input from those who are directly involved. Secondly, a comment related to food insecurity in Urbana's low income areas. I work on staff at Salt and Light and I want to remind you all of the existence of the Salt and Light supermarket and thrift store on South Philo Road. We sell groceries and fresh produce seven days a week and I can concur with the concerns and recommendations brought to you by the University of Illinois students this evening. Yes, to improved pedestrian safety, yes, to better and more bus shelters. And I think that's a great idea to appoint a community liaison. These would all address crucial needs. Right. And I'd like to add the proposal that Solagra, Gracia, Gracia and Salt and Light might consider partnering in order to provide greater volume and variety of fresh produce to the Philo Road community. So finally and most urgently, the, the people of Urbana are urging you to vote no on the FOP contract as it stands and to honor your promises to your constituents to implement reform, transparency, and accountability in policing. This contract goes against all that you have committed to. This is not the police accountability that has been promised to the residents of Urbana and I'd like to know why you would approve a contract that continues to neuter the Urbana's civilian police review board. I understand that you have the obligation to serve both Urbana's law enforcement employees and its residents, and this contract does neither. Good cops need to know that Urbana is serious about having a robust system of accountability for so-called bad, bad apples. So do the residents. And this contract fails both groups. Thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Vaxley, 510 West Main in Urbana. And I wanted to speak to just a couple of points about the study. I was involved in it early on, but I was not able to continue for various reasons and I didn't actually hear the final development and how it shook out. But I was shocked by the suggestion that you open up Lincoln Square. Lincoln Square is the heart and soul of downtown Urbana and Jim Webster has put an enormous amount of money into the mall and it is a community center. It's not something to just be casually cast aside just to, you know, make it easier for people to go and come. There are many, many public activities in the mall which Jim has allowed at no charge. I've been to many of them, so I know that they're very well attended and very welcome. The other thing I'm really shocked about with the study is the lack of contact with stakeholders in the downtown area, namely Jim. And Norman and I own four commercial buildings on Main Street and my input, other than, you know, occasionally making a comment in the first couple of meetings, nobody came by to talk to us about anything, really. And there are some other considerations I think that you should be aware of and that is that this, if I'm reading the plan correctly, parking is going to be, you know, a real issue, particularly if you consider the options for taking out the deck. It's already an issue, you may or may not be aware of that, but street parking is almost non-existent on busy days. And, you know, the city's RFP for allowing the Rose Bowl to use parking lot one again has a lot of downtown business owners upset. We expressed our concern about it last year and during the pandemic was a different issue. We understand that, you know, they were not able to, you know, have their music inside during the pandemic, but the pandemic now has eased up and you can use interior spaces again. And taking that lot out with six restaurants within two blocks of it just seems to us to be a little bit ridiculous. You know, we're concerned about it, particularly since there's so little street parking. So like the others have urged you, I think, going back to the parking issue, taking out the plaza and in front of what, yes, it's the Independent Media Center, but it's also the U.S. Postal Service. And we're also very concerned about the loss of the postal service downtown. It would affect tremendously the business owners in downtown who rely upon it. And if you take out that, that parking in front of the post office, you might as well just shut the post office down because I don't know where you would park to go there. People are not going to park in the deck, even if it's still there and, you know, schlep their packages down the stairs and over to the post office. You have to be able to park close by. So it seems to me that you need to take a hard look at the options that are presented and how they affect parking because parking has become an issue in downtown. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Eric Sacks. I think the ideas for revitalizing downtown, there were many good ones, notwithstanding the idea to de-mall Lincoln Square. However, I think adding more green space, making it more walkable, widening the streets, a dedicated space for the farmer's market, these are all great ideas. And some of them could even be extended to outside of the downtown area, for example, on Springfield further to the west. I think, though, the main constraint to revitalizing downtown is to have more people living downtown. People will go shopping and support businesses near to where they live. And right now, we have very few people living downtown. And I think partly the reason for this issue of people not going to the downtown as much as we'd like is that the center of, of Urbana-Champaign, in terms of the largest employer and where all the students go for university, is of course, the campus. And that's to the west. So if you're coming to and from home and you live to the west, you don't go through downtown. And if you live to the east, you usually drive around it or maybe through it, but you don't often stop. So I think the key, long-term, is to have more people living downtown. And I think there's an opportunity to have more green space and to infill and densify. And I think if you look at some of the larger towers that exist on Green Street, near the center of, of town, and that probably is controversial, you could have a lot of residences up high, you could have businesses down below at that scale, you could have parking underneath. And that would create a much more urban and vibrant atmosphere ultimately in the long term. I think because if you had that kind of densification, you could also have a lot of green space around it and so you could have your cake and eat it too. But I think where I would suggest is that this actually be studied. What, what is the optimal density to get the kind of revitalization that we need? And I'm sure there's people who can put numbers to this so that we would move forward with data, basically. Aside from that, I have one point about the, the food insecurity and food deserts. Having traveled in many parts of the world where people often don't live near where, you know, food is sold and often don't have transportation of their own, usually the solution to this problem is that there is a transit hub near the central market. That's the time honored solution around the world. We don't have a central market, we don't have a transit hub near something like that. But one could imagine making some sort of arrangements with some of the larger supermarkets in town to allow for better transit from areas that are underserved directly to their stores. And that could improve food security and access here in, in Urbana-Champaign. Thanks very much.
Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Eldris Melinda Carr and I just want to start with a quote from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, which says, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Dear Mayor Marlin and members of the Urbana City Council, I am speaking tonight in reference to the FOP contract. I understand the importance of the collective bargaining agreement process. The current process for the city of Urbana has been approved for several years in its current format without taking into account the representation of neighborhoods of color and looking at equitable practices from the lens of blacks or African Americans who experience desperate treatment, as noted in the city of Urbana's 2021 resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. We have issues that are not just about money, but there are issues of equity, social justice, principles, and moral issues, community involvement, accountability, oversight, and transparency. We need to find a way so that black citizens have a voice at the table. Many don't feel that we have a voice. We're asking that the mayor and city council appoint more black citizens and people of color to the board. And that is what good faith is all about. These appointed citizens should have a background with activism and advocacy. These appointed citizens should have a background with activism and advocacy, be very courageous, and be able to reach out to the community for input pertinent to their needs. People of color and other citizens in general should not be afraid to file a complaint or take further action when they believe they have received unfair treatment or their civil rights have been violated. We need citizens from Ward III on the Citizens Police Review Board so that we have equal representation under the law. The negotiation process lacks transparency, as noted by the NAACP and ACLU, and this process can no longer be implemented without the voices of the public in which the police are sworn in to serve and protect. I ask that you vote no on the proposed resolution and that critical changes be made to the contract and side letter, including reinstating full authority to the CPRB. The CPRB must be able to do their job effectively without additional restrictions during the review process. In addition to the contract limitations of the CPRB, other areas of concern include Urbana police are not required to appear in front of the board when they are the subject of a complaint. Anyone who has a felony cannot serve on the review board. De-escalation training should be mandatory and removal of notices language in Section 8.7 of the contract. Hearing the outcome of this vote tonight, we look forward to pursuing viable options for the black citizens of Urbana who need a voice on this board and in this process to improve citizen and police relations for future generations. And I'm speaking as myself, but I've talked to some people, and I've been involved locally for a long time with churches as the President of the Minister Alliance, so I've seen a lot of things locally, I've talked to a lot of people, so I'm not just speaking just here, not knowing things. So I do have some background on things that have happened locally. So I thank you for listening to me tonight, and I know you have a hard decision to make, and I thank you for the work that you do today. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, Council. I'm here to speak tonight.
State your name for the record.
My name is Nicholas Dale, I am a resident of Champagne, Illinois. I'm here to speak tonight on the resolution for the Fraternal Order of the Police contract. I've been doing a lot of civil rights advocacy work recently, and some of the research that I found, I think, is pertinent for everyone to know. With some of the results that were presented earlier tonight to you about the overpolicing of people of color and blacks in this community, there, I'm sure you're well aware with the Safety Act, now the Illinois Law Enforcement Trainings and Standards Board has a Form Q that any citizen can fill out. So I suggest to all of you that you take it into consideration to develop some sort of oversight into the way that they police. Moreover, into the oversight, the Illinois Crime Analyst Organization, they're a tax-exempt organization that I found from the IRS, they do pattern and practice studies on the police as well as the Department of Justice, so they could help gain valuable insight for the Fraternal Order of the Police contract, the way that things are going. Moreover than that, the Fraternal Order of the Police is a tax-exempt organization, you can look them up on the IRS Tax Exempt Organization search tool, and they also have a bulk data master file that you can get from them for their 990 tax disclosures. And I recently have filled out a Form 4506B with the IRS to get their organizing document, their exemption application, their Form 1023, which is the exemption application. That contains their conflict interest policies, which, if there is any sort of conflict interest going on within the Fraternal Order of the Police and maybe the legal department here, the citizens have a right to know for transparency. Other documents that you can request on that 4506B is the bylaws signed and completed Form 2848, Form 8821, supplemental responses, expediated handling requests, and any correspondence that is mandated by public disclosure laws. There's many things that is public that we can use as a community and a governing body to make sure that the police are effectively policing, not overpolicing and not underpolicing, and that there's no legal liability to the city council. But I definitely suggest to everyone to review those conflict interest policies, to review everything, and to vote no on the Fraternal Order of the Police contract. They're already overpaid. The IRS releases tax statistics on individuals, and I think there's 19 million people that make $100,000 or more, and the entire workforce is basically ages 18 to 65 or 67, whenever people retire. There's already too many police that are overpaid when you factor into their pensions and everything. So I vote no, and I demand that you guys vote no, too, as so many people have to demand jury trials from having their rights violated. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to council input and communication. Thank you for reminding me, yes. This message was sent by three people, Luke Lee, Matt Soyland, and Justin Mansfield. I urge all council members to vote against the Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023-2026. It is unacceptable to give UPD nearly $1 million in raises, particularly after the city has already allocated 1.34 million in bonuses. More importantly, this contract also fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, civilian oversight, and overpolicing. Council must vote no on this contract and pressure UPD to return to the bargaining table to remove the restrictions on the civilian police review board and add the basic disciplinary measures necessary to hold police accountable for misconduct. If the council is truly happy with such a lackluster contract, it's very troubling. As a concerned member of the Champagne-Urbana community, I ask that you vote no on Resolution All power to the people. I also have a message from Councilmember Mary Alice Wu, who was not able to attend tonight. She's out of town. Her statement, "I voted to send the FOP contract to council. I understand the concerns that have been raised about the contract and wish to share the rationale for my vote last Monday. Many have commented about the proposed contract does not specifically reference fireable offenses. While true, the offenses commentators have listed, witness tampering and excessive use of force, for example, are already covered by state, federal law, or city policies. Nothing in the FOP contract prevents the city from firing people for these offenses. Furthermore, the city can update its policies far faster than a contract can be changed. These updates are made by city management. Others have commented on a purported contradiction between the use of force policy and the 10 shared principles. To the best of my knowledge, the contract policies and resolution are in agreement. It is abundantly clear that the CPRB needs to be rethought. It is ineffective in its current form. The community needs a say in shaping the future of the review board, and those changes will take time and careful consideration. The public safety review includes steps to help the city update this ordinance. Only after we have followed a thoughtful process with community input should we change the CPRB, and only after we change the CPRB should we update the side letter. It doesn't make sense to update the side letter now." Thank you, Mary Alice Wu. And we have two pieces of correspondence that will be entered into the record. One is a letter from the NAACP of Champagne County and the ACLU of Champagne County, and then a message from Bryan Adams. That was related to the contract, and the message from Bryan Adams related to Lincoln Square Mall, and those will be entered into the meeting record. Sharice has a couple more.
Okay, and I was asked to read this from Alan Axelrod. "I would like to suggest that the council prepares a resolution stating that their committed courses of act, what their committed courses of action are. It is important that it is demonstrated in a collective capacity rather than one or two council persons speaking on the matter. That said, I would like to thank Grace for her vote last week on the police contract. Again, I will remind the city council that the contract will need to be renegotiated due to the implementation of the Community Emergency Services and Supports Act. Sincerely, Alan."
My name is Alex Taylor. Do we have Alex on the, I didn't know. I am a PhD student at the University of Illinois. Please read my comment out loud during the council meeting, Alan 31323. "I urge all city council members to vote against the Fraternal Order of Police contract for 2023 to 2026. This contract fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, and civilian oversight. Instead of using UPD nearly $1 million in raises, that money should be, would be better spent addressing the socioeconomic roots of crime, lack of access to affordable housing, education, and basic necessities. Council must vote no on this contract and work with the mayor to pressure UPD to return to the bargaining table to remove the restrictions on the civilian police review board and add the basic disciplinary measures necessary to hold police accountable for misconduct. As a concerned member of the Urbana community, I ask that you vote no on Resolution 2022-12-091R. Best regards, Alex Taylor."
I believe that's it for the email messages. We'll move on to council input and communication. Grace.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you for the public input and the presentations that we had this evening. There's a lot, I feel like there's a lot going on. One thing I wanted to mention was apologies and acknowledging the harm caused by things that were potentially included in the public realm study and the reaction from the coverage. I think that sometimes the reaction is worse than the action, just for whatever assurances for people, just speaking for myself personally. I don't support demolishing or having, you know, reconstruction of Lincoln Square Mall that might not really make sense or be very feasible or cost-effective. And so, for whatever assurances it's worth, at least speaking for myself, I think that we can absolutely do both. I think that we can absolutely have an enhanced downtown, bring people in, revitalize. I think that we can absolutely do all that, and I don't think that it should be at the expense of the Lincoln Square Mall or our downtown Urbana small businesses. So I just wanted to chime in that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, well, Sharice.
Yes, I just want to say something regarding this, the FOP contract, and maybe there's just been a lot of misunderstanding about working with unions in general. I know a lot of people want transparency, and you want all of these things out in the open, and when we negotiate and so on and so forth, and that doesn't happen with any union. I was in SAG, I was in the CTA when I lived in California, and we got our contracts, and we discussed our contracts, and we were not on the team, negotiating teams, as, you know, for any of that, and you either signed it, you ratified it, or you didn't. You said it was, or you what, or you didn't. And my father, that's what he did at University of Illinois for 30 years, is he negotiated the contracts between the grounds workers and the cafeteria workers, and, yeah, I even think the university police, I'm not quite sure. And never was the entire membership or the public invited to be in the negotiating room with him and whoever the team was that was negotiating on the side of those workers. And, oops, there. In here. Briles. I'm sorry if you felt like I should not take offense to some of the things that you say. I do. And I think in terms of, you talk about arrests, I think in terms of, I was calling the police sometimes twice a week about gunfire in my neighborhood, down the street, within earshot, sometimes in the middle of the day. So I'm not thinking about arrests, I'm thinking about, is there going to be a bullet hitting my house? I think about Joanne Coward's daughter that got shot and killed in her home. That's what I think about. And I think about, when I call 911, I want the police to show up. That's what I think about. So that's why I'm offended, that's why I was offended. So I want you to understand that, and I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, so that we can get an understanding. But it's nothing personal. The police force that I envision is a police force that, where there's trust, not just us trusting them, but them trusting us, and not just city council, I mean the city. I've read articles and everything about other cities that where the police quit, where the morale was so low, where, they call Minneapolis Murderopolis now because of that. And I don't want to see that happening here. I envision a dream to be reality. I see, I hear a lot of people always quoting Dr. King, and nothing about Dr. King, okay? But I really want to see that dream as reality, and that's for everybody, not just for me, for everybody. That's what I see. That's my vision. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports of standing committees. There are none committee of the whole. Councilmember Bishop.
On, there's nothing on the consent agenda, on one item on the regular agenda, Resolution Number 2022-12-091R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 70, term of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Chris.
Thank you. Last year, during our contract negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, the city council was told that the Fraternal Order of Police was very difficult to work with because the FOP won't even allow for police officers to be fired for beating up someone or falsifying evidence. In that small moment, I saw an encapsulation of the 30 years of deterioration of a good relationship between the police and the community. I hoped Urbana could be different and that the Urbana Police Department could lead the way. So last year, I contacted Law Enforcement Action Partnership, a nonprofit organization in Massachusetts founded in 2002. They are comprised of police officers, police chiefs, prosecutors, judges, correctional officers, and other law enforcement officials dedicated to ending the drug war and reforming the criminal justice system for the better and seeking real public safety solutions. I asked them if they had any contract language to prohibit excessive use of force or other things. I asked them if they had any contract language to prohibit excessive use of force and falsifying evidence. One of their on-staff lawyers sent me the following. Quote, "Urbana police officers can be immediately terminated by the Urbana Chief of Police at the conclusion of an investigation, hearing, and appeal if: (1) An officer deliberately uses unjustified and reckless excessive force as defined in departmental policy and training; (2) An officer deliberately fails to intervene to stop a fellow officer from using unjustified and reckless excessive force as defined in departmental policy and training; (3) An officer deliberately fails to report incidents by fellow officers of unjustified and reckless excessive force as defined in departmental policy and training to a superior officer or supervisor; (4) An officer (a) deliberately makes a false statement in a police report or warrant application; (b) revises, edits, or redacts any portion of any document for the purpose of creating a falsehood or for the purpose of eliminating or concealing a false statement that had knowingly been made; or (c) makes a statement orally or in writing in the course of employment as a police officer the officer knows or has reason to know to be false; (5) An officer intentionally entices, colludes with, or coerces any witness in any proceeding or matter to provide any statement or testimony the officer intends, knows, or has reason to know to be false; (6) An officer deliberately fabricates or tampers with any physical evidence in any matter in any way to reduce the integrity, reliability, or usefulness of the evidence; (7) An officer deliberately fails to collect or preserve any evidence relevant to any matter; (8) An officer engages in any conduct or makes any statement or representation that undermines the integrity, reliability, or truthfulness of any matter or investigation. Fired officers would retain their right to appeal under the arbitration system," end quote. LEAP also alerted that the City of Urbana's FOP contract had been identified as problematic regarding transparency and accountability. LEAP connected me with Campaign Zero, a national nonprofit that seeks to eliminate police killings of civilians, improving police-community interactions, and ensuring accountability. It was recommended the Urbana FOP contract change its regulations over the Civilian Police Review Board to allow independent and transparent oversight of the Urbana Police Department. The current contract puts the FOP entirely in charge of what the Civilian Police Review Board can and cannot do. The contract requires all investigations into citizen complaints be done only by the Police Department. The contract prohibits the CPRB from conducting its own investigation. The contract prohibits a complainant's lawyer, the complainant themselves, or the media from conducting an investigation into complaints against officers. The contract prohibits the CPRB from communicating with relevant witnesses to the complaint. The contract requires the names of officers, their disciplinary records, and the investigation itself be kept confidential. The contract places no obligation on officers to participate in CPRB proceedings. These investigative standards, which have been avoided by the FOP for the last 12 years, are the same investigative standards every resident of Urbana is under at the police station, jailhouse, and courthouse. The Urbana City Council has supported the Urbana Police Department. Since May 3, 2021, when this current city council was sworn into office, this city council has allocated over $30 million of your tax dollars to law enforcement in the way of increased salaries, bonuses, equipment, remodeled facilities, budgets, and new investigative staff. What the Urbana City Council shouldn't support is our police chief disempowered to fire police officers who, in very, very rare instances, engage in deliberate, intentional, and unjustified excessive uses of force or don't intervene or don't report unjustified excessive uses of force by their colleagues. The Urbana City Council shouldn't support our police chief unable to fire police officers who, in very rare instances, engage in falsifying evidence or coercing or enticing witnesses to give false testimony the officer knows to be untrue. Neither should the Urbana City Council support our civilian police review board unable to conduct a fair, impartial, transparent, unfettered, and public investigation of the very, very few complaints against police officers filed by our citizens. The Urbana City Council should codify these precautionary regulations into the union contract so there won't be problems in the future. These precautionary regulations would have absolutely no impact on police officers who follow the rules, have their body cams on, and enjoy union legal representation. The heroes and good guys and gals have nothing to fear from public oversight and should embrace such oversight to provide insurances to the public they serve that they can trust the Urbana Police Department, that the City of Urbana takes a zero-tolerance view of intentional and deliberate misconduct, and our Police Department abides by transparency and accountability. As a city council, we must maintain the public's faith in their public— in their Police Department. The Urbana Police Department should have a good reputation. Having a labor contract that insists the public will be protected and their complaints will be taken seriously is a necessary step toward improving public, police, and community relations. Unfortunately, the contract negotiators failed to include these provisions in the proposed contract. Thank you for listening.
Any other comments? Grace.
Thanks. I think I said most of my things I need to say last week. Just wanted to reiterate on some of those comments about the importance of the city policies that can still be made outside of this contract. For example, as I recall, excessive force is not defined in our use-of-force policy. So how could we fire someone for something that isn't defined? So I think that there's still a lot of work that can be done and a lot of positive changes as far as the policy side. And I can also see that there are actually some advantages to having those things in city policy rather than the contract and be locked in. And so, I'm absolutely willing to work on those policy changes. I hope we can. I don't know the path. I think that's a good suggestion to kind of lay the path that we're willing to take to get there. But I would like to see some actual action be taken on some of these policy changes that we've been talking about for quite a while. Thank you.
Other comments? Chandra.
Once again, we're faced with a very tough vote and decision. I mean, obviously, we—the—obviously, the safety and security of our residents are first and foremost, at least in my mind. But that also coincides with the availability of police officers in existence. And so, it is definitely a sensitive scale to balance. Our CPRB is an appeals model, and that—that's the first thing, I think, needs to be changed because it can't be—if—if it's an appeals-based model, the police chief in his very right, you know, solely has the investigative power. If it was another model and another form, obviously, it would be very different for CPRB and its rights and powers. And so, I think the whole ordinance needs to be redrafted, and that isn't something the city staff was able—is able to do in the amount of time the contract is up. Even if we delay this further and go another couple of months, that's not enough time to revamp the entire ordinance. And that's why it was, I guess, left not on the table for negotiation at this round. But I sat and heard from the FOP, and—and they have sort of assured us that they are willing to come back to the table for negotiation around, you know, the CPRB and the side letter. I mean, even just—if we scrap the side letter altogether, that's not even possible because it was negotiated in and we would have to negotiate it out again. So—and with this public safety review coming down the pipeline, I would love to see what the recommendations are for that before we make changes. And then, if they recommend something that sounds even better, us going back and making more changes, I think we'd rather—I would rather just do all the changes all at once when we have all the information we need to implement good change at one time. I agree with what Grace said about the things being in the policy and changing the policy parts of it because oftentimes, things that we're trying to negotiate, you know, aren't found in standard contracts. It's mostly like your wages, your rights and conditions as an employee and employer. So it—I mean, I hear everyone, I, you know, read the emails, I hear the comments. But it is a tough decision. And—in talking about the pay of police officers, if we didn't, you know, offer these incentives and recruitment opportunities, then what kind of police force would we have? If—I don't think we would get quality candidates when we're already struggling to recruit people. So, it's a—it's a delicate balance that we're trying to walk here. And it's not—it's not easy. There's a lot to consider. So I—yeah. So, anyway, I appreciate everyone's input and I hope that you know that your city council is trying to walk this fine line and—and balance this between, you know, wanting and needing the police and also making sure that our residents are safe.
Sharice.
Okay, I'm just gonna—I know that there are many people in my ward, in particularly, that would prefer that I vote against this. And the understanding that I want to make is that this is a ratified contract. This is also the city itself having to show that when we agree upon something, that we are—we should be able to keep our word of what we—what we said, the side that we would uphold. And it's also something that regarding the CPRB contract and so on and so forth, that in and of itself can be reopened, that part, because it's a side from the contract. It is—it is difficult, just like Chandra said. But at the same time, my goal is that I would like to see our police officers, our Police Department, be a department that is, in fact, more pro-safety, proactive in helping community and keeping those—and keeping some kind of relationship, actually, with the community. And we have a lot of really nice and really good young officers right now. And those officers I have seen, like I said before, I see officers helping people. I'm not saying that there are some other issues. And I'm not saying that the generation gap—I know I've heard—I've heard from at least one constituent that feels that she gets disrespected by the police because they don't respect her age and they call her by her first name. It's—it—it's stuff like that. She—she has felt intimidated saying that she was followed home by police after speaking up at—a public input here. And those are things that—if—if indeed they happen, they need to stop. So, and I've had my own experiences, but many years ago, like the officers are probably retired, dead, gone, whatever, of a Urbana police officer following me at 2:00 in the morning to my house and then turning his lights on after I parked my car in front of my house and asked me, as I got out of the car, "Where do you think you're going?" And my answer was, "To bed." So, "Thank you for the escort," is basically how that went. And I got no—no more problem. And that happened more than 30 years ago. I don't see that kind of generational issue, you know, a police officer actually doing that to me today. So, what I want is for our police officers to know that there's improvement that can be made. They know that. That's what the Ten Shared Principles are about. And that they continue to do the reform they will—they will be getting or if they already haven't gotten the de-escalation training. And then there's another—there's more reform coming down the pipe. We're still working on that. It is not something that's going to happen overnight. It is an ongoing process, and ongoing means ongoing. So, that means whoever the chief is, who's ever sitting on this dais, that is a process that our—our police force will constantly be doing from here on out. It's not just the first-time thing, and it's not just an only-time thing. Those are funds that are—I—I believe any police chief that is sitting upstairs will have to find to make sure that the police officers do that—that kind of training on a constant basis because they'll be changing constantly. So, I'm—I am going to—to vote in favor of this because I—the city needs a police force to reform. We don't want—I don't want to see any losers. I don't want to see—and I don't think that the Urbana will be losing by reforming our police force as it is.
James.
Yeah. Thank you. I will, again, like last week, be voting for this. I still believe that there is no easy path to the things that we want, that we've heard that the citizens want. I do believe, however, that the path—the alternative that has been advocated for would not be an easier path. And I still strongly believe that maintaining management rights, maintaining the ability to put what kind of discipline is available to management in policy rather than enumerating it in the contract gives us a stronger power because enumeration does not protect us from an officer appealing, even though it was enumerated. And it does put us at risk of things not being enumerated, not being covered by the contract. And so, I believe strongly that we're going to make progress on the CPRB, maybe sooner than the 18-month process, not for rebuilding it, but for talking about changes that can make that better in some of the ways that it's been suggested. But I don't want to—I don't want to do that. I want to do that by building a relationship with the FOP and working by moving forward rather than returning to a confrontational mode of negotiation.
Any other comments? Jay, did you want to say anything?
Excuse me, I can, yeah, jump in for a moment, thank you. I think just to echo some of what has been recently shared and some of what I said last week as well, this is not the tool for reform, right? I think that there have been a lot of conversations about what people would hope to see in this contract, what people would want to see in this contract, and that commitment from the council towards change remains, just thinking about what tool is the appropriate one to use for navigating those changes in a way that actually will have one, excuse me, meaningful impact, and that doesn't restrict us from being able to make changes that we might need to during that three-year period is important. So I hear the frustration, and I still appreciate all the public engagement on this process. But I think it's important that as we move forward with the vote tonight, there's an understanding of the commitment to reform, to working through a process to ensure the best possible protection for the residents of Urbana remains. Thank you.
Sharice, would you take the chair?
I would happily take the chair. The chair recognizes Mayor Marlin.
Thanks. I want to repeat again some of what I said last week. First of all, the city of Urbana has an excellent police department. They are committed to working with us to reform the CPRB. They are committed to working with us in this comprehensive public safety review. They have made those commitments to council members, to me, and we will, we will expect them to uphold that, and I know they will. We have an opportunity over the next year to year and a half to examine very closely, for the very first time, the, in this public safety review, our police and fire response models. This is something that the public has been asking for, for years, which the nation as a whole is realizing has to be done. I've been at meetings with mayors from all over the countries, and many cities are starting to think about doing this very thing. We're actually doing it. We have started this work. We will have real information, extreme amount of data to base our decisions on, and that includes what's the best model for civilian police review board for the city of Urbana, for a community of our size, with our particular challenges, with our population, and our police force and our residents, and our businesses, and our needs. And that's what the beauty of this safety review is going to be, is this will be customized to the city of Urbana, not any other community in the nation. We were going to be comparing ourselves to ourselves, what's the best model that will work for us. So I ask everyone who has put as much thought into urging us to vote against this contract to also put energy into helping us focus on examining safety in Urbana. There will be a lot of opportunity for folks to be engaged, but this represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, certainly in my lifetime in public office. So I'm proud that we're doing this, and I support this contract. It's a good contract, and it will allow us to move forward, to focus on this review and the reform that people are asking for. Thank you. Okay. There's, see no further comment? Will the clerk please call the roll? I got the chair back, right?
Oh, yeah, you can have the chair back.
Thank you. Reluctantly. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? No. Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Three yes, three no, is a tie.
With a tie, the mayor has the right to break a tie. Mayor Marlin?
The mayor votes yes. That motion passes. Next item, reports of officers? None. There's no business. We have two mayoral appointments. The first is to the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees for the term ending June 30th, 2024. I recommend appointment of Erica Bellina. She's a one-year resident of Urbana, brings 20 years of experience as an early childhood educator. She holds a Master's of Education in Infant and Early Childhood Special Ed from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. She writes in her statement, quote, "My mother was a librarian. I grew up with libraries as a central part of my life. My family was and continues to be passionate about the services that libraries provide to the community. We use our local libraries weekly. As a teacher, I know what a profound impact access to a quality library can have on someone's life. I believe that libraries play a vital role in furthering equal opportunity and democracy, and I would like to volunteer my time toward this goal." The other appointment for tonight considers John Gutzmer for the Urbana Public Television Commission, and that's a term ending June 30th, 2026. I would say for the library trustees, this is a term ending June 30th, 2024. It's to fill out a seat that was recently vacated by Michael Weisman on the board. John is a 28-year resident of Champagne County, is the Chief Information Officer for Urbana School District 116, and he writes in his statement, quote, "UPTV works closely with the Urbana School District 116 to provide services for Board of Education meetings and other content. As a representative of the district, I would strive to make UPTV services as current, useful, and relevant to our constituents as possible. Additionally, we have an interest in making sure that the technology that drives UPTV remains as up-to-date as possible to provide consistent, high-quality service," end quote. I will add on this appointment, the UPTV Commission has a number of seats that require a representative from a specific public entity. In this case, the seat that John has applied for is the seat that represents the Urbana School District, and that's why he's, he's an employee of the school district, representing the district. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the appointments for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, term ending June 30th, 2024, of Erica Bellina, and the Urbana Public Television Commission, term ending June 30th, 2026, John Gutzmer.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chandra. Discussion? Will the clerk please call? Yeah.
It, I take it from your explanation that John Gutzmer does not have to be a resident of Urbana to be opposed? Is he a resident of Urbana?
I don't know, but there's seats on the commission that you do not have to be a resident of Urbana. But you do have to be a representative of, represent the
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no.
He is not a resident?
I don't know, actually.
His application doesn't have an address on it?
I could get that information for you.
Thank you.
But Urbana Public, UPTV Commission does have a number of seats where you do not have to be a resident of Urbana, because frankly, UPTV reaches outside of the Urbana city limits. Any other questions? Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is the discussion item for the constitutional rights of persons incarcerated in the Champagne County Jail.
Thanks. This is about a draft letter that I emailed to council members yesterday. Understandable if you haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I was curious if there was support for sending this letter as a collective council, or if anyone was, you know, opposed, signing on as individual members who are interested. So maybe for the public and for council members, I'll just read it now quickly, it's just a page. "To whom it may concern, including Julia Reitz, Sheriff Fuhrman, Champagne County Board, Judge Randall Rosenbaum, Champagne County Public Defender's Office. We write in support of basic human and constitutional rights to all individuals detained in the Champagne County Jail. It has come to our attention that there has been a recent hunger strike that has lasted for two weeks among some of the people in the Champagne County Jail, seeking fulfillment of their Eighth Amendment rights. Many have been held at the jail for a long period, and some state that they have not spoken with their attorney in months. In-person visits have not been restored since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, and families are forced to pay high rates for the chance to communicate with their loved ones in the jail through video or phone calls. Even though the hunger strike has ended, these conditions remain for those still detained in the jail. The Eighth Amendment states that excessive bail shall not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel and unusual punishment inflicted. Regardless of someone's actions, they are still entitled to their constitutional rights. These individuals awaiting trial have not been convicted of a crime and are presumed innocent until proven guilty. We ask that you also consider the coming bail reforms in the state of Illinois and how this will change the bail and detainment system. Additionally, we support access to timely and fair legal representation. Social connections are essential to mental health of any human being. As such and as a basic human right, we support inmates' communication with family members and legal representation without excessive financial burden. We are not seeking for an exemption of the legal system or for those individuals to avoid accountability for their alleged actions. We are simply asking for basic constitutional and human rights to be respected in our local jail and legal system. Thank you for your consideration."
And just a reminder, since this item was added tonight, the council can't take any official votes or action. You can get a sense of the council straw poll. James?
Yeah, I would ask, as older person, Wilken, have you discussed the letter and the facts that you've put in it with either the chair of the county board, the elected county executive, the state's attorney, or the sheriff? I would wholeheartedly agree with the last paragraph. Sign my name to that in a minute, but there are things in this letter that I don't, that are statements that I would like to understand if they are true or not.
Could you clarify which statements?
It talks about in-person visits not being restored after the pandemic. I don't know that in-person visits with family members were allowed before the pandemic. I don't know if that's a change. The details of the hunger strike and who were participating in that, I understand that at least a couple of those individuals are being held with high bail due to the crimes that they committed, two of them including murder. And so I don't think they would be, I don't think the Safety Act would change whether they would be held or not because of the significant of their, of their actions. So I, I just think there's maybe a lot of generalities in there that I, I don't know that I can sign my name to.
Yeah, thank you for sharing and to address your questions. I have not spoken to county board representatives on this, and it is a complicated thing, and I understand especially from a lot of input that we hear, that sometimes facts can get lost or not always easy to find. There are differences that I've heard, and I'm actually not entirely sure who or what to believe, and that's why I actually very intentionally avoided a lot of assertive statements. You know, it doesn't claim that anyone would be released under the Safety Act, it just mentions to consider changes in bail reform that will be coming. It doesn't assert a lot of facts there. The one that it does about not having in-person visits, I did verify with, that's on the sheriff's website. If you want to visit the jail, there are directions for family members about how you need to do the video calls. I can't absolutely confirm that there were in-person visits, but that is absolutely the standard before the pandemic in a lot of detainment systems. So I'm definitely open to feedback, and I agree, I did try to avoid a lot of assertions and just kind of what we recommend in the gist of the situation. So if you want to decide later if you're interested in not signing on, or if you have any specific feedback that would feel more comfortable to sign on to.
James?
I will add that I did talk to both Kyle Patterson, Chair of the County Board, and Julia Reitz today about this. One thing that I did ask them was the, the video call and the communication tools is provided by a third party. One thing I did ask them to look into, and they could assure me that that is not a predatory situation, we know in the past that there have been situations where a third party has been involved with providing phone service for inmates, and it was, in fact, highly overcharging. That's been addressed in the state legislature for state prisons, but I don't know that it's been addressed for county. So I, I did, I mean, that was one of the items that was of concern to me in that list was whether the available modes of communicating with family were being charged too much for. My understanding, I was told that if you go to the jail to utilize the tools, there's no charge, but if you want to use it from home, there is a charge. Kyle Patterson said he would look into that a little closer to see if, what the rates were, to understand whether they're high or not.
Any other comments or questions? Chris?
So what's the procedural steps from here on out, on this, on this particular item? Are we trying to answer James's questions first? Are we taking this up next meeting and just whether we want to sign on or not individually? Or what?
Since, again, you can't take any official action as a group, but I would recommend if you are interested in signing on, you contact Council Member Wilken individually to avoid conflict with the Open Meetings Act, in order to avoid any violations of the Open Meetings Act. As far as who researches the accuracy of these statements, that's up to council. I encourage you to verify the facts that are, or the allegations that are made in the letter, the statements. But anyway, it's up to you. Sharice?
That's basically the question I was going to ask Grace. Did you want, did you want us to look that up, or you want us to help you research it? Or, I don't know if we can do that, actually. Or did, should we try to look this up on our own, or are you going to do that and like just do an answer to James's questions and his concerns?
Good questions. I think that's up to you and each council member and how they want to proceed. I felt like this was something that needed to be done, and since it's outside of our direct control, I thought a letter of support would be an appropriate, minimal kind of gesture we could do. I have looked into this, and I feel okay with it. I have verified the one statement about visits and the Eighth Amendment, the few facts or statements that are in there, yes, I have verified and I feel comfortable with. I'm also taking some of the word of the people on the hunger strike and the statements that they made, and if you want to verify anything else further, I would definitely encourage you to do that. But as far as me, I feel okay with what I've written, and if someone doesn't feel okay with it and they want to change it, then I encourage them to do that.
That's what, that's what is going to be my other question. If we could use your draft as a template of sorts and sign, and sign individual letters?
Sure, I think that's a reasonable approach as well.
Okay.
Any other input on this process? All right. With no further business before the meeting, we are adjourned.